Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 19th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please stand to salute the flag.
.....................................................................
Madam Clerk, roll call the members.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Agenzio?
Here.
Here, Counselor Cogliandro?
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino?
Here.
Here, Counselor Grino Sawaya?
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas?
Here.
Here, Counselor Herramio is absent. Counselor Kelly?
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski?
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Counselor President Silvestri?
Here.
Here, Quorum is present.
Madam Clerk, can we suspend the rules and take up 25-150 first?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Calendar item number three. Hearing called as ordered on the application of New York Capital Investment Group, LLC, 500 Turnpike Street, Canton, Mass., requesting a special permit for a car wash use at 350 Squire Road.
Good evening, members of the Revere City Council. My name is Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio. I'm located at 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere, Massachusetts. Along with me tonight is Nair Ronan to my right. He is one of the principals of the LLC that's before you tonight, along with the architect, Hal Chaboo. Before you is the special permit application for 350 Squire Road. And before I comment on that application, I do want to make a specific point of referencing in stating that I incorporate by reference a letter that I sent to the City Council on May 14th, 2025. In that detailed six-page memorandum of law, I laid out the standards as well as the arguments, as a matter of fact, with exhibits. I incorporate that in, as a matter of course, into my presentation. The application before you is a request for a special permit for the creation of a car wash. It's important to note that currently 350 Squire Road is in a general business district. It is, again, a general business district. It has been unfortunately a fairly blighted property over the last 10 years. I've been involved with it one way or another. I can state that about 10 years ago, when the gas station that was on the site was demolished, that the property was sold and that the new purchasers were engaged in quite a bit of heavy litigation with one of the oil companies to lift some of the restrictions. After that litigation had a successful ending, there was some thought that there was going to be housing there. There were plans produced. There were meetings at the time. The meetings went as far as meeting with the ward council then, who was Rick Serino, meeting with City Hall. After those meetings, the thought process was had that it probably wouldn't have been the best spot for a five-story housing complex. And as a result of that, the owners put the property back on the market and have been marketing it since for resale. Currently, the applicant before you has an active purchase and sale on the property. The Drury Brothers operate Prestige Car Wash. They own over 25 of these facilities throughout the state of Massachusetts. They're well-known and very reputable. It is not a fly-by-night operation. With regard to this lot, the lot is roughly 24,000 square feet. Because it is a GB district, it has a fairly high density and a fairly height limitation. It can go up to 50 feet high, anything you build, with a density of a 1.5. It's important to note that the project before you is a significantly less-dense project. Again, a significantly less-dense project than what can be built there, okay? As I said, as a matter of right, any building there can be at a 1.5 on-floor area ratio. This is a .15. So it's 10 times smaller from a density perspective than what can be built there as a matter of right. This car wash is about 30 feet high with the two coppers on either end, and here's a photo of it. With the coppers off the top, it's about 30 feet high, 35 feet high or 34 feet high. So it's about anywhere from 15 to 20 feet smaller than any larger building that could be built there as a matter of right. It's also only about 3,400 square feet. So it's really important to note that this building that's being proposed is much smaller than some of the other of-right zoning dimensions that they would allow for this parcel. As you all know, a special permit, all that the project has to show is that the project itself will be less detrimental in use for the neighborhood and that it provides beneficial uses. And here, there's a list of those, and I've outlined them in the presentation, in the memorandum to you. But it's important to note again that this is a blighted parcel of property and that this blight will be replaced with a brand-new structure. It's energy-sufficient. It's going to be a green facility. The water support system for the building is going to be a modern-day plumbing system. The groundwater and storage for drainwater is going to be brought up to code, which it currently is. It's going to be brought up to code, and the current engineering plans will allow for an increase in storm water pickup by 20% to 30%. I think it's also important to note that this particular project that's before you has not come about out of the blue. There've been a number of community meetings. There were at least two. I believe one was in February and one was in March. As a result of those community meetings, we met with a number of the neighbors, and I think we had a pretty good back-and-forth. As a result, I think we've submitted nine, nine letters of support for this project from neighbors. And of the nine, almost all of them are butters. I believe the one that has not submitted one yet is because the home is empty and the owner currently lives in Peabody. But we're also in discussions with that person as well. I believe that's the DeFrancesco family that's on the Sagurni side. But again, we are still in contact with them, and the house currently is empty, for sure. That being said, it's important to note that I do think we'll have some opposition because at the community meetings, the owner of the car wash on the other side of Squire Road has shown a keen interest in this. While that car wash is really nowhere near this, it's on the other side, maybe a half-mile down the road, it prevents some competition and maybe some better prices for the folks in the area. Not only better prices, it may also present more options, more consumer opportunity. And this particular competitor on the other side of Squire Road has made an effort to oppose that. My understanding is this individual has actually knocked doors in the neighborhood, even though he doesn't live there, that he's actually knocked doors in the neighborhood to stir up some opposition. And disappointingly to me, some of that opposition has been told things that are just frankly not true. That being said, I think it's important that when we look at the hot-button issues with any development on Squire Road, one of them is traffic. And so I won't get into the traffic report that was prepared for this because it's already been submitted to you, but I want to make a point of stating that the traffic that will come out of this particular use, this car wash, is less, as a matter of science. It is less than the other allowed uses that currently exist on Squire Road and less than the other allowed uses that can go on to this lot. So it's important to note that if we're looking at putting a project in there, that this is one of the lowest-traffic producers of any of the uses that can be used on Squire Road. I think it's also important to note that the traffic study shows that, by and large, car washes are not destination resorts. No one plans on leaving their home and driving miles to go to a car wash. By and large, the research shows that if you're driving by and it's empty, you pull in if you need a car wash and you get that car wash done. If there's cars there, then you just keep going and you don't get your car washed done. It's just that simple. That's what the studies show. With particular attention to some of the traffic, this particular property has a queuing of over 20 cars, a queuing of over 20 cars on the lot itself before you have any access onto Squire Road. So it was designed with community input. The community wanted it done this way, and so as a result, we moved the building around to allow for way more queuing on the lot that was originally intended. And by the way, it's allowed, right? So we're almost at double the number than what the minimum is for this particular lot. And finally, I would say that, again, as a general business district on Squire Road, it's important that this district for the city of Revere not have the black eye that this spot is currently presenting. It's important to note that it's producing roughly $17,000 a year in property tax. After this brand-new facility is put together, it's going to quadruple the property tax to the city of Revere. All this being said and done, I understand this is just a public hearing. We're going to go to subcommittee, and there'll be more detailed questions, which we'll be ready to answer. But for purposes of public hearing, I think it's important, again, we have nine letters of support, and they've all been submitted as part of the record. We did not ask for these people to come here tonight. We didn't want to inundate the City Council chamber. But I think it's important to note that all the neighbors around it, by and large, especially the immediate neighbors, are in support. And thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Do we have any proponents? In favor? Name and address.
Anthony Pozziale, 51 Arcadia Street. When I hear "commercial revenue," a big smile goes across my face. When I hear that we're not going to get residential revenue, meaning more units, more people, more strain on the city's infrastructure, I get excited. The city needs more commercial revenue. We turn down a lot of commercial revenue, for example, like cannabis. This isn't going to be cannabis. It's not going to be a strip club. It's not going to be a liquor store. It's going to be a car wash that's going to generate money for the city without burden. When you have a residential building, the tax revenue that gets made there basically takes care of the people that live there. It's like dollar for dollar. When you have commercial revenue, that money comes in, and the people that own the business, they go home to their city where their city worries about the infrastructure and the toilet flushes that they deal with over there, and we get to keep all the money. I think this is a good deal for us. I think we can make a lot of money for the city that's needed. One other point, when we're talking about duplicate businesses on Squire Road, if you decide to vote against this because there's another car wash there, please call Dunkin' Donuts, because there's a Dunkin' Donuts across from Dunkin' Donuts. Please call Market Basket because there is...
You're in favor. Thank you. Name and address.
Anthony Cutler, 111 Breeden's Lane. Yeah, I think it's great to encourage more options for consumers whenever we can get it. Like mentioned, we already have other businesses where there's multiple locations in the city, Stop &amp; Shop, Dunkin' Donuts. There's nothing wrong with putting another car wash in the city. I think it brings in more revenue and competition brings out greatness. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Against? Opponents? Do we have any closing proponents? Opening opponents?
No.
Oh. You're in favor or against?
In favor.
In favor, okay. So proponents, yep.
Okay. Jim Sherman, 137 Keene Street. I'm a director butler. At first, our first neighborhood meeting, I was deadly against this project. I had four major concerns, and as time went on, the concerns were taken care of. First concern was they wanted to put the entrance on Keene Street, wanted the people to come off of Squire Road, come onto Keene Street, and into their property. No way. Dead against that. The second thing that I had was the noise for the vacuums. Attorney D'Ambrosio gave me an address of one of their locations in Salem that has this system that they're going to be putting in here in Revere. I went there, spent some time there, and there was absolutely just about no noise coming out of the vacuums at all. I was quite surprised. My third thing was the traffic, Squire Road. I'm convinced there's nothing we can do with that. And the fourth thing, previous when the gas station was there, the dumpster was against the residents. In their proposal, they plan on putting the dumpster away from the residents, so I'm very happy for that. And that's my reasons why I'm for this project now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? Anyone else in favor? Closing that side. Any opponents? Against? Sir, name and address.
Rich DeFrancesco, 142 Augusta Street. I've talked to Attorney D'Ambrosio a few times, and he made a few good points. My major concerns, one is traffic. So we have the gas station right next to my house, pretty much. There's a lot of traffic, as it is right now. We have a lot of people who have retired, have moved out the street. There's a lot of young kids over there, and there's cars going back and forth in the street, kind of recklessly, actually. Now we're going to have a car wash, and I'm concerned about additional traffic. Because what I think's going to happen is you're going to have people coming down Squire Road, and if, like after a snowstorm or something, the day after when people want to get the car washed, you're going to have a line, I think. Probably not a huge line, but you're going to have a line. People are going to be cutting down probably Keene Street and hopping onto Malden Street, so you're going to end up with more traffic over there. I'm concerned about just people coming out of the car wash and then going to the gas station next door, you know, to get scratch tickets or whatever. It's going to be more traffic. And then you have the light over there. You have North Gate over there. I think there's going to be a lot of traffic at certain points, not all the time, but at certain points there definitely will be. I'm also concerned about the noise. I did go down to the car wash in Salem, and as the other gentleman mentioned, in the front, it was very quiet, right? But you went around the back, my wife and I went around the back, and there was a car coming through the full car wash, and that was pretty loud. It wasn't jet engine loud, but it was pretty loud. And I was just saying to myself, what is that going to be like every single time a car comes through there? The blowers are basically right in front of my property. And I know they're going to be putting trees and probably like some type of fence over there, but it's still, it's pretty loud. And I was standing probably about, I don't know, 50 feet away from the one in Salem. And it was still, I mean, it was still fairly loud. The front was quiet, like you said, but the back is not. I'm concerned about trash. You know, we already have like scratch tickets on my front lawn. I don't know if there's going to be more stuff over there. I have no idea. But yeah, so those are my concerns. I'm also concerned about this environmental stuff. You know, it sounds like they are going to be putting in things in place to prevent like toxic spills and stuff like that coming into our property, but I still get concerned about stuff like that, too. I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Any other opponents? Anyone against? Closing that side. City councilors? Counselor Janino?
Thank you. Attorney D'Ambrosio, a few questions for you, please. First, I'll thank you for the information on the same thing. Thanks for having the meetings down at the Sheridan, the best. What are the hours of operation going to be down there?
Standard seven to nine.
Nine at night?
Yes.
All right. I know over in Malden and in Medford over the weekend, there were some traffic problems. In the event that that does happen in Revere, do we have a plan in place to deal with the problems?
So the answer is yes. This will be a different site, however. The site in Malden is an industrial site with an industrial zone. It's a totally different footprint. This building has been designed to have over 300 feet, I believe it's 360 feet, of runway, if you will. So when I say that there's 20 cars queuing, we're giving every car almost 20 feet for queuing space. It's actually less than that. So if we ever have a situation where there's more than 20 waiting to get in and out of the car wash, if there's an issue with that, we would have no issue with a detail allowing traffic to move along. I think that at the end of the day, if the red light is off, if it's a red light at that intersection, the facility will stop working so that no cars can come in. Again, it's going to be one of those scenarios where you have quite a bit of queuing on the spot, on the parcel. If cars can't get in there, I very much doubt anyone's going to try to get in there, but even if they were and it becomes an issue, they have no objection to some sort of police detail to move folks along.
Actually, there's 20 cars queuing in the lot itself, and then along the front of the property, between Keene Street and the driveway, another 10 cars probably?
So I'd suggest it's over 340 feet of queuing space, including the car wash itself, the canal. So at a minimum, it's 20 cars on the site. It may actually be a little bit more, is what I'm suggesting. That's what will fit on the property itself. The property is about 24,000 square feet. It's important to remember that it's over, an acre is 44,000, so it's literally more than a half-an-acre-sized lot.
All right. And I said, I know we talked to all the neighbors over there, and most of them are on board with it. I'd like to see them all on board. Before we end it, I'm in favor of it as it stands right now, with the neighbors being on board.
Absolutely.
I think the lot right now, as I saw, it's been vacant for seven years now, and it's about time to do something over there. I look forward to working with you on it.
And I, you know, I do want to point out, Mr. DeFrancesco, he has an absolute right to be here, but the house is empty. He lives in Peabody. We've reached out to him to try to find out what kind of mitigation he'd like on that side, and we're going to continue that effort. But I think it's important to note that the house is empty. My understanding is that it'll be on the market to be sold shortly. So I did want to point that out. The only neighbor that did come tonight was someone that doesn't even live in the city.
And there's no access from the side streets to that parking lot?
Absolutely not.
All on Squire Road?
So that's another big win for that community, Counselor, is that we're closing the accessway onto Sagurni. There'll be a gate there for police and fire. And the same for Keene. That'll be closed as well. There'll be one entrance and exit, and that's going to be off of Squire Road.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you. Attorney D'Ambrosio, thank you for your presentation and all the documents that you provided. I also wanted to say thank you for hosting the two community meetings. I have confidence that the neighborhood was made aware. I personally hand-delivered community to about 100 residents twice, so I'm happy that notice has been granted to everyone in the neighborhood. I would like to see everyone on board with this. The gentleman that spoke a few minutes ago, I don't recollect his name, I'm sorry, that is in opposition of this, he mentioned the noise from the back of the establishment. I know that during the community meetings, you and the applicant and his architect were very amenable to any concerns that were brought forward and changed the design and, you know, really tried to work with the community, and I'm thankful for that. Are there any other measures that could possibly be taken to remediate noise?
Landscaping and the kind of fence that they want. So we can tell you that a number of the neighbors on the right-hand side of the lot wanted a very nice cedar, high-quality wooden fence. We are amenable to placing a different kind of fence on the left side, if that's what the neighbor wants. Again, he hasn't engaged in that conversation. But as we all know, that once this matter moves out of the City Council room, it goes to Site Plan Review, and Site Plan Review is going to have the ability to further condition it with trees, shrubs, a particular kind of fence. I could tell you that my client is very willing to accommodate the neighbors, as you know. We're more than willing to give them what they want on the project. And that really is the benefit of having a group that lives in the state, has a number of these facilities, and wants to be a good neighbor.
And at Site Plan Review, will the lighting be a consideration that will be looked at as well? Because where this is open until 9:00 PM, I don't want lights to be bothering those residents or being inconvenient, so that's something that will be addressed at Site Plan Review?
Absolutely. We usually use the dimming lights that shoot out, not in, and they're aimed at the ground, so absolutely.
My last question is just, the commercial revenue from this establishment is one of the things that makes it very attractive for me and reason why I'll support it. But I did check, it is taking in about a little over $17,000 now in property taxes. You said that would be quadrupled. But when I checked with the assessor's office, they came back with a figure of about $36,000 or so. So are there additional monies that you're adding into that figure for property taxes?
No. I'm just telling you what it'll cost to build and what the number we anticipate it would be, right? If you're looking at the rate on fair market value.
Okay, so then...
I'm not sure how the assessor's office is looking at it.
Okay, so then for the record, I just want to say that the assessor's office gave me a figure of, I'll give it to you. They gave me a figure of roughly $36,000 after the car wash is built in yearly property taxes, so I just want to be on the record with that, okay?
I can say the property, the car wash itself is over a $3 million construction project, and then the lot itself. And again, it's a fair market value determination. How the city assessor's office does it, I'll leave it to them. I can just tell you that if you run the numbers on value, it's roughly four times the amount.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I got a couple of questions. Is any unions will be building this facility?
So we haven't gone into the bidding process?
Okay.
But it's an open bid process? Anybody can bid on the work?
Sure.
No one's precluded?
And the other thing I'm wondering is, the gentleman that was opposed to this, he mentioned environmental, you know, threats. So what happens with the soap, the wastewater and the soap and the chemicals that are used on the cars? Where does that go?
So this is a modern, state-of-the-art, encapsulated car wash. And so the drainage system, the internal function, it is modern and as up-to-date as you can get. Any of the soot, any of the negative substances are removed. Along the property itself, you're going to have a better sewage system created for rainwater. It's actually going to improve not only improve any car wash, it's going to be better than any car wash on Squire Road in terms of an environmental perspective. It's going to actually improve any of the storm water drainage issues that currently exist on that lot. They're going to be remediated to a percentage of between 20% and 30% better.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jerry, thanks so much for the presentation. I also want to thank the resident, Mr. Sherman, who spoke earlier. He had a lot of the same concerns that I had heard from residences far away on the side streets, Derby Street, Sagurni. And I was really thinking about the residents on Keene Street in that area for cut-through purposes. And I love the idea of the single curb cut on Squire Road and then just the emergency gate for emergency apparatus. But it sounds like the owners are willing to work with the residents and the neighbors, which is great. I know they come from a very reputable business, but that's a great thing to have, is something, someone that's willing to work with the residents. And to the other gentleman, Mr. DeFrancesco, I know he had pointed out the amount of volume coming from the back, and just if that's something else we can try and limit, I know he doesn't live near there, but someone else will live there. But if that's maybe something else we can look at, but it sounds like the owners are doing a great job working with the neighborhood. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other city councillors? Okay, this will be referred to zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number two, hearing call is ordered on the application of Natalia Maria Cantano Gomez, 85 Arlington Street, Revere, Mass., requesting a special permit for a Class II auto sales use at 195 American Legion Highway.
Councillor?
Mr. President, my name is Attorney Larry Simeoni. My law office is at 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. This evening, I represent Natalia Maria Cantano Gomez. She is a resident of Revere, 85 Arlington Street, Apartment 2. This issue that we're dealing with in this particular special permit request deals with the property 190 American Legion Highway in Revere. The property is owned by an LLC, 190 ALH Realty LLC. And in accordance with Exhibit 1, the summary of Massachusetts Secretary of State, Vincent R. Conti is the individual who's the entity's business coordinator. The prior Class II license holder was Mr. Christopher Varela Jr. He was DBA Millennium Motors. He operated a used car business for almost three years at that location. Subsequently, Millennium let the Class II license expire on February 28, 2025, leaving no Class II license for the premises. The property, in accordance with the records of the City of Revere's assessors, is located in the IP zone and has a land value, a land mass of 1.810 acres. Given the lapse of the license by Millennium, my applicant must now seek to file an application for Class II license with the Licensing Committee upon granting of a special permit in accordance with the Use Regulations of the zoning ordinance. A review of the Use Regulations establishes that in the IP district, that district allows for special permit to sell Class II vehicles. And I did provide a statement that my client adds to her background, and I have any questions the council may have.
Thank you, councillor. Do we have any proponents? Anyone in favor? Closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone against? Closing that side. City councillors? Councillor Cogliano?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a no-brainer. This is the same use in the same location, just with a more responsible owner. I've also spoken to Mr. Conti, the owner of the property. Everything seems to check out, so just make sure we don't let the special permit lapse next time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other city councillors? Okay, this will be referred to zoning.
Thank you.
Calendar item number four, hearing call is ordered on an ordinance removing outdated language from Title 2 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere.
Anyone here in favor? Closing that side. Any opponents? Okay, closing that side. City councillors? Okay, this will be referred to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number five, hearing call is ordered on an ordinance further amending the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to financial impact statements.
Any proponents? Hearing none, closing that side. Opponents? Hearing none, closing that side. City councillors? Councillor Cogliano?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this motion for the ordinance modification is just to change it from $5,000 to $10,000. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other city councillors? This will be referred to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number six, hearing call is ordered on zoning ordinance further amending Title 17 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere, establishing a definition in use for food trucks.
Tom?
Tom Skrowski, 281 Broadway. The motion that's in front of you, and actually the one that follows it as well, 25151, are really taken together as a package. The impetus from this was Motion 6044 submitted by Councillor Cogliandro in November, relative to the citing of food trucks on private property. It's currently prohibited under our zoning because our zoning is silent on the topic of food trucks, which obviously is a growing business typology and something we're looking to encourage in the city. So what these two things do together is basically permit it as a use with varying permitting requirements. So if a food truck is in the RC2 district, it needs to express permission of DCR. And in the other districts that we'd be permitting here, PDD1, which is the Suffolk Downs district, HB and TED, it would be permitted through the License Commission. And in the RC2, it would be as well, but with the RC2 in addition to that, you need the threshold of DCR approvals. It does not include any other areas. I know there have been previous discussions, and it's currently included in Title 5 to have a few other areas that are not included. We did not want to really delve too deeply into the topic of where we would be having food trucks within the public way. I know, like, the museum was one of those areas that was originally included in Title 5. We thought we'd keep it pretty simple, and basically what we did here and in the improvements on Title 5 is basically migrate all of those decisions into Title 17 or zoning ordinance where they really belong. And I figured we could have a discussion amongst the council as to where additional areas we might be looking to cite food trucks would be. But as for now, those are the three districts where it would be permitted, both in the public way, but also on private property. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Anyone else in favor? Name and address, please.
Forak Smokehouse at 297 Lee Burbank Highway. And this is the gentleman who owns the food truck that's on the private property in the TED district. So we had applied originally to the License Commission, and they gave us a pilot, they put us on a pilot program to see how it would work out. And my conversation I had with Ms. Haney was that so far, everything was okay, and that they were changing the food truck licensing, like this other gentleman was talking about. So we would like to apply for a full-time license, and that's the reason that we're here.
Thank you. So you're in favor?
We're in favor of it, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Anyone else here in favor?
Yes. Hi, good evening. Name, Valentina Moreno, address, 22 Cambridge Street, Massachusetts. Good evening, city councillors. My name, Valentina, I used to work here. Revere used to be the town, the city where I lived. And I'm here to speak, not just as a daughter, but as someone who deeply cares about the future of my parents' family business in Revere, called Eloti, the food truck, and Esquite, the Mexican restaurant that a lot of people know and love. I'm here to speak in strong support of the proposed changes to Title 17 and Title 5 that would give more flexibility and opportunity to food trucks operating in our city. I know we're bringing back this conversation, but I'm just letting you guys know, this is very important. This is a policy change for entrepreneurs in Revere. And this is a success story that has been spoken openly by many, many of you, and there are some step backs with that. So I'm here to just remind you guys that we are looking to thrive in Revere, to keep supporting the economy. And these entrepreneurs that you see here need that support from you, not just from words, but through actions, especially in this economy. Expanding food truck access again is not just a small policy change, it really impacts everyone. I see here people behind me, like, again, it's not just for me and for the people that are here, but other people that look after me and keep asking us, how do you guys do it? Why can't we go here and these? There's a lot of people that want to grow, and in order for that to happen, it has to happen with these. We need your support. We need a city that backs small businesses. Please listen to us. It is really important to us. And lastly, I just ask you today just to know that we will listen to all these changes, and we want to be more present. So if you guys ever have questions, please let us know, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents?
Clarence Rollo, 281 Solicitor's Office. I just wanted to flag from a policy standpoint, regardless of anyone's opinions on where they should or should not go, from a policy standpoint, I helped craft it with Tom, and for a business that exists all across Revere, and for it to not exist in our zoning proves really challenging when new business owners come in and existing business owners come in, well, I heard a food truck's going there, and I heard a councillor's putting one here, and I don't know if I can go here. And it's really hard for us to navigate between the Licensing Office, DPCD, and sometimes the Mayor's Office when they get folks in there, where these people should turn to to look. So if we had something solidified, when you all agree on where they should or should not go, it really makes a lot of sense moving forward for it to be in our zoning. Our restaurants are in zoning, fast food is in zoning, coffee shops in zoning. So that was really the intent behind this, and as Tom said, the decision to where ultimately those districts that we all choose will lay with you guys and with Tom and discussing with you. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Anyone else here in favor? Name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Emiliano Moreno, and I live in 660 Ocean Avenue in Revere. And I would just like to propose that it would mean a lot if we can have this food truck program again. As we've discussed, I think this would be beneficial for the local economy. I think this is also beneficial for employment opportunities. The food truck that I own is Eloti. It's a very small operation. We just focus on really, like, very basic things, like elotes and Mexican street corn. And this simple operation itself was sustaining, like, four to five families. So it's quite a lot. I'm sure other food trucks that have a similar scale or even a bigger scale could be employing more than that. And, you know, we started like five or six years ago, and we really grew in this community. I think we still have some people call my restaurant, asking where the food truck is going to be today and stuff like that. So it would really mean a lot also for a lot of people here in Revere. I wish I could have asked them to come, but I guess they were just quick restaurant calls. But I think just the current placement is a bit lacking, not to sound someone who's ungrateful. I think, for example, Shirley Avenue is quite the place, but it's just not sustainable. We had a former business associate who was not able to have any business there, and he had to shut down. He had a hot dog cart. I'm not sure if any of you ever got to see him, but yeah, I think it's quite the hard difficulty to sustain a business in some places like that. So I think places like the beach and/or here in the American Legion, they were really great places. I know there's been issues with the noise complaints. I think that was one of the biggest challenges we've had with the local community. But we do have a noiseless generator that has worked perfectly. And, you know, if there's some collaboration with the business owners, we can make sure everyone is compliant with any noise complaints. And I'm speaking as someone who is very noise-sensitive. You can ask my family, and they go ballistic if there's a party near my house. So trust me, I do, we do really care about our neighbors. We want to make sure we are very respectful to them, no matter where we are. And I think this last point on my bullet points is, I think, something that's probably beyond us, but I think this could help with the death of public space here in America, especially, you know, we all live indoors. So having these family-friendly businesses outdoors, out in the parks, in the beach, is a good image, not just for the city, but I think our generations that are growing up, you know, in a place that, you know, everything's shut in, everything's online. I'm sure you all grew up, and in America, that's much different than it is today. You know, you could play with the kids outside, go to the ice cream truck, but sadly, this is this idea of Americans dying, and I think it would be a good thing to promote this. It's a, yeah, I think it's a good pro-American sight, you know, seeing your family and your friends, taking out their dogs. And we saw that a lot, especially here in the American Legion. People would bring their dogs, they would bring their families, go to the picnic tables, and, you know, have some outdoor lunch, some fresh air. So hopefully, we can work towards something like that. And yeah, that's about it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Anyone else in favor? Proponents? Okay. Name and address, please.
Mi nombre es Andres Armillo. Yo soy residente de aquí a Revere. Vivo en la calle Marshall, en West Revere.
Hi, my name is Andres Armillo. I live in the street mall chart here in Revere.
Yo hace un par de años atrás comencé como emprendedor en un food truck aquí en Revere y tuve muchos inconvenientes.
A few years ago, I started as an entrepreneur here in Revere, in a food truck. I have a lot of inconvenience.
Trabajando conjuntamente con el cirihol de Revere, en una época, logramos poder traer mi food truck y trabajar en una zona privada porque no habían ordenanzas para poder trabajar en la zona pública.
With the help of the City of Revere, I was able to work in my food truck in a private area because there was no any opening for me to be able to work in a public place.
El caso es que fue mucho el esfuerzo. De pronto ustedes no saben los costos, el esfuerzo tan grande que implica hacer un food truck, y los sacrificios tan grandes para que luego, de tiempo para atrás, simplemente tomen una decisión y corten los food trucks aquí en la ciudad de Revere.
Probably you guys don't know all the for and all the expenses that we have to expend to be able to have the food truck able to work in the City of Revere. And it's been hard for us that now we don't have that opportunities that you guys have quite enough.
Es como si hubieran tirado la basura todo el trabajo que se construyó hoy atrás, precisamente para toda la gente y los emprendedores, o la gente que quiere una oportunidad aquí en la ciudad de Revere.
It's like all the hard work that we have done is being put in the trash, and all the entrepreneurs and the people that wants to be part of the community, be able to sustain the family, is being hard.
Por esa razón yo estoy acá totalmente a favor de nuevo traer los food trucks porque adicionalmente eso trae comercio, se benefician inclusive los restaurantes que están actualmente porque va a haber mayor circulación de personas, de visitantes.
A hundred percent I agree that we can be able to bring the food trucks back to the city because that's going to bring more business, and also for the local restaurants, it will have more fluency of people around the area.
Yo puedo dar fe porque yo estoy de ambos lados, con food truck y con restaurante. Hace ya el año pasado abrí mi restaurante en la zona de cerca de la Shirley Avenue.
I'm in both sides. I have the business of the food trucks, and a couple of years ago, I opened my own restaurant on the Shirley Avenue, so I know what it is.
Entonces, para mí es igual, no es competencia un food truck. Para mí, es todo lo contrario. Eso nos beneficia a todos.
And seeing in that way, food truck is not a competition for a restaurant. It's the opposite, like, it's convenient for all of us.
Yo espero que ustedes de pronto tengan eso en cuenta. Viene gente detrás con muchas ganas de salir adelante, que también merecen una oportunidad, y que mejor que aquí en Revere, que viene tanta gente a las playas de nosotros, y que hay para todos.
And I would like you guys to have this in consideration because it's going to bring a lot of people, like, you know, the people that go to the beach on Revere Beach, they can have the opportunity to experience what is to have something close by with a food truck. That's all. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Thank you very much. Any other proponents?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jorge Garcet, y vivo en 71 la S. C. Inzagos.
My name is George Garcet. I live in the 71.
Soy el propietario del food truck de Arepa La Mazorca.
I'm the owner of the food truck para La Mazorca.
Empecé con ese food truck de Arepa La Mazorca en agosto de 2023.
I started with the business in La Mazorca in 2023, in Riviera.
Bismol. En agosto, en julio de 2024, fui notificado que no podía operar más. Fue como un mes antes, pero me moré 15 días en la notificación, y ya faltaban 15 días para no volver a trabajar.
So in 2023, in July, I got a notification that I wasn't going to be able to...
2024.
Oh, sorry, 2024. I wasn't going to be able to work anymore in my food truck.
So, en ese momento, todo se me vino abajo porque era la única licencia donde yo trabajaba, y con eso sucedería mi familia, y fue devastador para mí en ese momento.
At that moment, it was something devastating for me and my family because that was the only source of income, and everything fell apart.
Luego, la comunidad tuvo una muy buena acogida con el producto de la comunidad porque no muchos negocios tenían mi producto.
My business had like a good point of view from other people because my business have different type of products that I wasn't offering at the moment.
La única oportunidad que tenía era trabajar en la playa, y me tocó salir rápido, pagar cinco mil dólares por ese tiempo que me quedaba del verano.
The only source of income that I had at the moment was to be able to work on the beach. But then I had to pay five thousand dollars for the short period of time that I was working during the summer.
En la cual, no tuve muy buenos ganancias.
And during that time, I didn't have enough earnings.
So, estuve parado después de ese, después de, eso fue el 14 de octubre, hasta el 14 tuve poder trabajar en la playa.
And I was just able to work until October 14 on the beach.
And then, tuve que moverme a otra ciudad donde yo podía tener otra licencia.
And then I had to move my food truck to another city where I was able to have another license.
Riviera es una muy buena comunidad para lo futuro, y quisiera tener la oportunidad de volver nuevamente a esta ciudad.
Riviera is a great place for us, the community of people who has food trucks. And I would love to be able to come back to the city of Riviera with my food truck.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? Anyone else in favor?
So I'm Joseline Magana, address 103 Warren Street in Lynn, Massachusetts. And I'm the owner of the Crave Shop Food Trailer. And I just want to tell you, this is the time that food truck owners need your support. We need more spaces, and we need to keep going with our business. We have put a lot in this small business, everything we have, and we need you. This is the time. We need you to support us, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other proponents? Anyone else here in favor? Proponents? Closing that side. Opponents? Anyone here against? Closing that side. City councilors? Counselor Agenzio?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for Mr. Skorowski. I'm fully supportive of food trucks. Now, we had the problem on Broadway that we addressed, and mainly because it was affecting, having adverse effect on brick and mortar restaurants. What safeguards do you have in this that would protect those brick and mortar restaurants?
So, the safeguards really would be the permitting process itself, would be the intent working with the License Commission. And, you know, these licenses need to be renewed on an annual basis. So essentially, if the, if the measures that we discussed in the Broadway situation were happening again, that particular license would not be granted the following year. So that's, you know, a measure if and when this is in full operation. The other measure of control would be really right now, as we're identifying those locations. There is a reason we didn't include the Broadway District within this because we heard you all loud and clear at that last meeting. Although we did remove that brick and mortar provision from Title V originally, that was in part to allow for a little bit more discretion because it might, and again, that's open to interpretation as well, if you all feel differently. But I think the idea was, if we delegate this to the Licensing Commission to actually make those decisions on a case-by-case basis, zoning at times can be a really blunt instrument. So if we just have that rule across the board of the proximity to another location, it might make sense in some areas, it might not in others, but then our hands are basically tied with that rule.
So the License Commission would determine the location of these places. There could be brick and mortar restaurants, but it would be on a case-by-case basis. So if a license is issued, and a brick and mortar restaurant has a problem or it's affecting their business, then what recourse do they have?
So the recourse really would be on an annual basis when they go back to the licensing process to renew their license. They could voice their...
Can I highlight an example?
Yes, example, please.
So when we were crafting it, and we decided to propose striking the buffer zone, it's for the discretion that Tom mentioned. So if you have an area where a food truck wants to operate in a parking lot that's privately owned, right next to a restaurant, if I am a sane License Commissioner, and I have folks voicing their opposition at that meeting, our License Commissioners are usually receptive to when councilors and when audience members go up and voice their concerns. But then if you have a buffer zone in our zoning, which he said is a blunt instrument, and you have a restaurant separated by six lanes of highway and a median, and then you have a food truck proposing to operate on the other side of the road, our hands would then be tied in not being able to offer discretion in cases like that, where there is a clear barrier, no pedestrian is going to walk across the six-lane highway to go to the food truck instead of the brick and mortar restaurant. And that is why we initially proposed striking that because it's binding our hands in an industry that is very flexible. These are mobile vehicles. They can be moved. And again, the License Commission, if Maggie wants to add, is always receptive to when folks come in and have noise complaints, when police officers come talk about disturbances, when residents say that things get out of hand.
Okay, so if a license is proposed in front of the License Commission, are you going to make the butters aware of, so, okay, please?
Yes, for new licenses, as a rule, and this is, no reason why this would not still be the case, is you're required to advertise and notify butters. Also, the License Commission, when people take complaints, they have a hearing and a disciplinary process if necessary.
Okay, so when you say advertise, so you're going to send a letter to a butters when you say a butters?
We put a legal notice in the Revere Journal for new licenses, and the applicant needs to notify butters with that legal notice. So you send that legal notice to your butters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, I was just wondering. Placement is really key with this. I know we had a problem down Beechmont last year, where we had a truck. And, I mean, I think it's this gentleman right here. But, you know, he was in a highway on Bennington Street and blocking traffic. And, you know, and I got a lot of calls for that. I just think placement is key. We just can't have a food truck in the middle of a three-lane highway, you know, blocking traffic, even though there's no butters there, there's a park there. So that's what I'm concerned about. But I am definitely in support of food trucks. I think it's a wonderful... I wish we had a park, an empty lot that we could place, we could build a park, a food truck park. They have them in Florida. They work well. They have music. They have everything. We don't have that land that we can just say, "Okay." The other thing I want to know is, do they pay a percentage to the city for their services, you know, their business, or is it just the license that they get?
It's just the licensing fee.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novacowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to Tom. One thing, you know, I see on the usage map, they're allowing an RC-2, PDD-1, HB, and TED districts to be allowed. What I'd like to see, and hopefully you can get it for us for the next meeting when we have this, I believe this is going to zoning, a map to show what these districts are, and to see what street, and not block out the street names so we can see exactly where it is and feel comfortable that these four zones are where we want them to be.
Sounds great.
You know, so, and I think the other councils would feel a little better too, to actually see what the potential places are. So I know we had a couple on Shirley Ave, and one neighbor complained about the generator. Matter of fact, it was the hot dog guy, I believe. But they changed the generator and got a quieter generator, so trying to make them happy. And then there was another truck, and we had to move them away from each other so they wouldn't be right next to each other and make more noise for the residents and the store owners. So we can talk more when we go into zoning about it, but I'm sure I'll have a few other questions about scenarios that may come about. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas?
One of my favorite days is during the Sandcastle event when the Riviera Beach Road is shut down. There are food trucks all along the road there. You can walk down the middle of the street, get an ice cream, go to the Kelly's food truck, get a sausage, get a sausage cart, there's a beer garden. There's a ton of stuff to do for the kids and the families. Is there any place that you can see the city finding like that? I know we have a number of huge parking lots, like the Target and Stop &amp; Shop lot on Furlong, Stop &amp; Shop on Squier Road, the Amazon complex has a huge lot. Is that something we could tap into in the future, privately-owned lots?
Certainly with a form of a public-private partnership. I think with the Target and the Stop &amp; Shop lot, it might be difficult because Suffolk Downs, I think, it's in their plans to do something along those lines pretty soon. And already, they've done that in smaller settings since they've opened. But Squier Road seems like a perfect opportunity. I worked in another community that had a Northgate shopping mall of sorts, right, with all that parking, some of it being underutilized, some of it really heavily utilized, right? But you could cite it in the right location with partnership with the property owners interested, for sure.
Thank you. And how would that work in regards to the property owners? Is that something the city would reach out to them? Would we have to pay them a certain, get a permit or pay them some kind of fee for the land use?
So for the Northgate example, you know, that, just to make it tangible, I think that would just be something we'd have discussions with the property owner. If it's something they'd be interested in, we'd just offer our support as a city to help work through the permitting process as appropriate.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually, I filed this motion because I spoke to a food truck driver, owner, that was interested in the Sozio, the old Sozio parking lot. Now, if we're going to talk about public and private partnerships, I would love to start there because that is a, I would love to put food trucks in that location. Target, Stop &amp; Shop, Northgate, that would be wonderful, you know, so, thank you.
I imagine you must have spoken to the students that did the student project on Squier Road because that was one of their findings that they just came out with, which I'll be giving you all a report when it becomes final. But I agree, that's a great site for it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors?
I have a follow-up question.
Counselor Agenzio?
Are food trucks subject to meal tax?
We all think so. Yes, yes. They're paying the bills, so I'll trust them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. This will be referred to zoning.
Counting item number seven. Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance further amending Title V, the revised ordinances of the city of Riviera relative to food trucks.
Do we have any proponents? Anyone in favor? Closing that side. Proponents? Food trucks. Proponents? Closing that side. Opponents? Anyone against? City councilors? This will be referred to zoning also.
Next up is public comment pursuant to Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
If you would like to speak on a motion or anything on the agenda, please come up. Your name, address, if you're a Riviera resident, and you have two minutes.
Good evening. Ed Terrill, 70 Soul Street, Riviera Mass. Just a quick question about Sozios that was mentioned earlier. Has all the asbestos been cleaned up at that site? I'm just curious, before we put a food truck there.
That we would have to look into.
Yeah, because when it first burned down, there were warnings of asbestos on the site. I think before we put any kind of food truck there, we have to really look into that. Thanks a bunch.
Thank you. Name, address, and motion?
Yeah, Andrew Heinsley, 371 North Shore Road. I'm here to speak about the tax exemption for property tax for veterans. Good evening, Council. My name's Andrew. Like I said, I'm a resident here in Riviera. I'm also 100% service-connected disabled veteran with multiple combat tours and multiple gunshot wounds in the line of duty. I'm here tonight to speak and ask support regarding the Riviera's property tax exemption for veterans. As it currently stands, Riviera only offers a partial property tax exemption for veterans with 100% disability rating. This is significantly less than what is offered by many other cities and towns across Massachusetts, where veterans, in my situation, receive a full 100% exemption. We're not asking for special treatment. We're asking to be treated equally and with the same level of dignity and support of other municipalities already provide. For veterans who have given so much and now face financial and physical challenges, the relief can make a real difference in maintaining housing and stability of the quality of life. Riviera has always had a proud tradition of honoring veterans, updating the local tax relief to matches that is offered in places like Peabody, Saugus, and Lynn, would be a concrete way to live up to that tradition. I respectfully ask the Council to review and consider amending the city's policy and grant full property tax exemption for 100% disabled veterans. Thank you for your time, Council.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Closing that. Madam Clerk?
Unfinished business, an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the veteran property tax work-off abatement program.
Claire?
I wanted to first thank the service member who just spoke, and note for the Council that I am not the finances expert here, so I have noted his request, as I'm sure you all have. And if you bring it back to the CFO before I do, whoever gets there first. But I wanted to quickly address, I know time is running out, but I wanted to address the Council's concerns from the May 12 meeting last week. And I'm going to try to be brief. Again, I know it's late. So I just wanted to explain that in certain situations, when the city adopts a law by the state, that law can allow for discretion by the city. And you might remember when I worked with the DEI Director, we submitted some of those flag-raising policies. We identified to this Council the discretion that was offered by the Supreme Court of the United States. A municipality could adopt a policy of flagpoles serving as forums of public expression or forums of government speech. This Council analyzed those options, analyzed that discretion, and approved a lawful ordinance. However, not all endeavors allow for discretion by the municipality. In 2018, Riviera adopted Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5N, which established the work-off program for veterans to reduce their property taxes. This program almost mirrors the senior citizen property tax work-off. In doing so, Riviera bound itself to the provisions... citizen property tax work-off. In doing so, Revere bound itself to the provisions of this general law. Section 5N states, quote, "A program to allow veterans, as defined in Clause 43 of Section 7 of Chapter 4," end quote. Under this clause, a veteran shall mean any person who was discharged under honorable conditions, who served in the Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, or Air Force of the United States, or, quote, "on full-time National Guard duty under Titles 10 or 32 of the United States Code, or under Sections 38, 40, and 41 of Chapter 33, for not less than 90 days active service, at least one day of which was for wartime service," end quote. The latter sections apply to presidential orders of militia for escort duties, presidential orders against invasion or insurrection, and presidential orders in response to riot, natural disaster, or catastrophe. As used in this clause of our adoption of the law, active service, quote, "shall not include active duty for training in the Army National Guard, or in National Guard or active duty for training as a reservist in the armed forces of the United States," end quote. This is the state language dictating our adoption of the veteran work-off property tax abatement. The city, at this level, does not have the discretion to alter these definitions. It is my hope that this information provides the clarity and reaffirmation needed to approve the proposed work-off ordinance as written. The work-off program has been in the city's queue for about five to six years before I was even hired, and the administration has made it clear to me that they are keen on moving forward in offering this property tax abatement to the veterans in the manner so enshrined in Massachusetts law and in United States Code. If circumstances change in the future, whether it be financial, or whether it be the number of applicants that the office has the personnel to accept, I know the council is always amenable to feedback, revisions, and updates. But until then, I hope this information helps everybody.
Thank you very much. Any city counselors? Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, and I understand everything that was said, and I agree with everything that was said. It's obviously chapters are concerned. But some of those inputs and some of those titles with Title 10 and people that were brought on duty, some of them may have been injured, as you mentioned before. If they left their service from their National Guard being injured, they would require, and the whole thing here of what we're re-discussing this is because of that one form that I'm throwing at everybody, that NGB 22. And some of those folks will need that form to identify their disability and/or their 20 years of service, which is included in the definition. So that's why I want that NGB 22 inserted in our revised ordinance besides the DD 214. So, you know, and may also, two things, two other things I want to say. I did get, I did get an email from a constituent, and I would like to read that as a, that they wanted stated because they weren't happy with the description of what you said last week as far as National Guard people, in a sense, being secondhand soldiers.
I don't believe I said those words, just for the record.
Well, what you said was that National Guard people would be thought about if there were other veterans, if there was space, that there weren't enough veterans to fill
That was before I realized the law does not even let us think about that. We are constrained.
But you, you know, you, you made a lot of people unhappy with it, with what you said, and I felt the same way.
Our Veterans Service Office also received many calls.
Excuse me, ma'am. I let you speak, and I would like to finish my dissertation. And beside myself feeling badly about the way it was put forward, these people that were watching it on TV, who are also National Guard folks, were very upset in the minute details that you made a National Guard person feel. And I want to read their email to you, which they requested. And it was put out by Steve Robertson on Lantern Road. And what they said was, "The Massachusetts Bay Colony Militia was founded in December 1636. It has the four oldest units in the United States Army. In 1775, the Militia Company of Lexington confronted the British to deter them from getting our ammunition. They fought the Battles of Lexington and conquered in April of 1775. Then in June of 1775, the Army of Observation was formed by combining militia from New Hampshire, Connecticut, Rhode Island, and of course, Massachusetts. These troops fought the Battle of the Bunker Hill. Please remember that these were all volunteer troops. In 1903, the DICK Act brought this volunteer militia into being the National Guard in its current form. The National Guard 26th Yankee Division fought in World War I, World War II, and other conflicts. Post 9/11, numerous National Guard units have been called into federal service in both Operation Freedom in Afghanistan 2001 to 2021, as well as Operation Iraqi Freedom 2003 to 2011. We have many friends who served in the sand as National Guardsmen, and many came home with injuries and some died. During the COVID pandemic, the National Guard was activated to administer COVID-19 vaccines in multiple cities throughout the Commonwealth. Approximately 250 Guardsmen were activated and trained to drive school transportation vehicles after a mass shortage of bus drivers due to the pandemic. Currently, there are National Guardsmen and women on active duty protecting the borders along Texas and New Mexico. Who are the first troops that are called out when there are natural disasters? The National Guard. To say that these men and women who have served and protected our country and are still, they are not considered veterans is an absolute abomination. Every man and woman who proudly wears the uniform of the United States National Guard or military is not only a hero, but superheroes as they do this willingly. As of August 2024, there are 17,545 National Guardsmen and women in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Remember, in June of 1973, the military draft ended per order of President Nixon. Other than the men and women who chose to go into full-time military service, a country depends on the National Guard, all the troops. These troops can be called up anytime to be deployed to anywhere in the world. So I say that adding the NGB 22 to this city ordinance is still in line because it accepts the DD 214, which shows a discharge. So does the NGB 22 for National Guardsmen. So I ask the city council to accept that and include it in the new ordinance.
Person, point of personal privilege. Thank you. Counselor, I know we had this conversation last week, but I, we're going to go over it once again because every, you, you're right with 100% of what you said. And the gentleman at home from Lantern Ave, I want to thank you for your service. And you're absolutely right, Counselor. But everything you explained back to the Revolutionary War, Civil War, equaled those veterans going to active duty and fighting in a war. Specifically, any veteran that is in the National Guard or reserves that comes down on active orders, goes overseas to the sand or any of, any of the deployment plate locations, would then get a DD 214. So I believe what you're asking is that if a regular National Guard member who never comes down on active orders and doesn't, is not disabled, is allowed to get into this program? Is that what you're requesting?
I am requesting that it include those National Guard members that had 20 years of service, whether they were overseas or not. They're still labeled as veterans, but they still had 20 years of service, if not more, and wore the uniform during that time, for enough time to get a benefits from the DOD in, in, in health benefits. So I am asking that the city of Revere include those members that have an NGB 22, be allowed to participate in the tax write-off program for the city of Revere.
Mr. President, may I offer?
Please.
I feel like there are a lot of emotions in here, and I understand that because military service, whether active or not, is close to many families in the city. And I am not a property owner, nor am I a veteran, so I have no personal stake in gaining or losing anything with this proposal before you tonight. So I just want to reiterate what the law states. Despite Council President Silvestri and Counselor Nowosowski's personal experiences with what they've had and what their constituents have, I want to just reiterate for everyone's understanding what the law states. So besides what I outlined in quotes from the adopting law that allows Revere to offer the property tax write-off to veterans, there is further clarification in congressional reports as recent as two years ago. So after former President Obama signed the Miller Blumenthal Veterans Healthcare and Benefits Improvement Act and the, I call it the Obama Veterans Act because the name is very long. But just to make sure that all the cards are on the table, this act gave the honorary status naming veterans for National Guardsmen and reservists. And sometimes it can be confused with offering financial benefits versus being just a gesture of appreciation from the United States government. And in the congressional report prepared for the Veterans Committee in the House and in the Senate, it explained that those reserve members and those National Guard members with 20 or more years of service, as Counselor Nowosowski said, are granted the honorary veteran status. However, Section 305 of that law does not grant additional financial access to certain Veterans Affairs benefits. VeteranAid.org explains that there is no financial benefit associated with Obama's change, and the act serves to exhibit the rightful understanding and appreciation for the role that National Guard members and reservists have played in the history of defending the United States from foreign enemies. Additionally, in Titles 10 and Titles 32 of the United States Code, the statutory definition of a veteran contains two key provisions, which I believe Council President Silvestri has gone over at the last meeting. By law, to be considered a veteran, in addition to what the Massachusetts law requires, which I just read out loud to all of you, the service member must have served and completed active military naval air or space now service, and this includes accepting provisions for those who have died and become disabled. Secondly, the service member must be discharged from service under other than dishonorable conditions. Massachusetts is more strict than that. You need an honorable discharge. The federal government opens the pool a little wider and just says other than dishonorable conditions. The report further clarifies the veteran status of reserve components, quote, "Some members of the reserve components, including the National Guard, do not meet the active military service and length of service requirements due to the nature of service performed with either the reserves or National Guard. A member of the reserve components who is activated for federal military service, as Council President Silvestri just described, and enters that activation period and meets the length of service requirement, will receive the DD 214 form, which is used to access veterans' benefits." The federal activation gives anyone a DD 214, whether they are an Army sergeant or if they are a reserve member. There are exceptions to reserve members who have not served on active duty. They can qualify as veterans if they have died or if they have become disabled during certain types of training. They, their spouses, their surviving kinship, whoever that may be, receives that form indicating their disability or, in the sadder cases, the death certificate. So I just want to reiterate, aside from emotions, and as someone who stands nothing to gain or lose from this ordinance, I'm trying my best to help the very limitedly staffed Veterans Service Office put through what I believe to be a cut-and-dry property tax write-off, married exactly the same way the senior citizens one is based off of, except this one is for veterans. So the city cannot choose. We don't have the ability to form the policy exactly the way we want with the discretion that we want. And while it stinks in some cases, because not all cities are one size fits all and not all demographics are one size fits all, when we adopt state laws saying that we're allowed to do something, we are bound by their definitions. If they have definitions listed, if they didn't, we could define it any way we wanted. But they refer to federal code, they refer to state law, and we're pretty much bound by that. So just keep that in mind.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Thank you. I agree with everything you said. The only thing I disagree with is the people that National Guard folks that have had 20 years of service, okay, and were found to be injured on duty and now get a benefit from the city. They need that NGB 22 to show what happened during their National Guard career and prior to, to establish a benefit. And I also say that the federal rule, when President Obama made his, I agree with, there's no benefits. And the same thing with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, no benefits. But that's their choice of what they wanted to do for the Commonwealth and for the government, you know, the United States government. We are the city of Revere. We are the core of where people have come from. And I would say that we should entitle the few folks that may have, in that position of the 20 years, that own homes and that may be senior citizens, okay, that we, as a city, allow them to get this benefit through the city of Revere ordinance, not through a Commonwealth of Mass or a federal, a federal rule. I think we ought to take care of those folks that we have here in the city of Revere and allow them to show their NGB 22 if they meet those criteria or either be injured or 20 years or more of service.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliano.
Thank you, Mr. President. One, maybe two questions. First question. Is Counselor Nowosowski's amendment, proposed amendment against the law?
Me or you? I can go first. The way I see it, Counselor Nowosowski's amendment would make it contradictory for the Veterans Service Officer to enforce the will of the Commonwealth in their efforts to serve the property tax abatement.
Certainly, and I've said this before, Paul Capizzi, city solicitor, any law passed by the feds or the state preamps anything that we choose to adopt that may be contrary to that. So certainly, one could argue, yes, it would be against the law. The difference being, who's going to challenge it? So that's what becomes a judgment call. As written, my office and Claire could not support doing something we know to be illegal for the benefit of anybody, just because we feel like it's the right thing to do. I'm not opposed to it. No one's opposed to it. Like Claire said, I don't, I don't have any dog in this fight either. But I would have to certainly advise against knowingly adopting a thing that we know may be contrary to what the state of the federal law requires.
Thank you.
And just the other question, because I was going to ask it. Do we know how many people in the city of Revere, how many veterans would actually qualify for Counselor Nowosowski's proposed amendment?
I would, I would say, for those folks that I know, a handful.
Thank you very much.
I can also make one more quick highlight, if it helps you all in your understanding. The federal code and the state law, they don't list out, you know, the veteran has to be this age and this age. The veteran has to have this form and this form. The forms are a product of whatever policy is in place with the VA that our Veterans Service Officer, who has to be a veteran themselves, are able to accept. So that is just a delineation for us. But what it represents is what Counselor Nowosowski is talking about, active service, reserve service, all those types of things.
Mr. President, if I just made a slight thing.
Counselor.
And the NGB 22 is accepted for, for disability.
I spoke with the VSO in the city of Lynn and their clerk. They were both very helpful. I believe their VSO is active-duty National Guardsman, so he was super helpful. And they said in rare instances, for certain disability VA benefits, they can accept the NGB 22 for those who were injured during active-duty training or non-active-duty reserve training who are disabled. However, that is for certain health benefits. That is not for the property tax exemption work-off that the legislature passed and allowed municipalities to adopt. work off that the legislature passed and allowed municipalities to adopt.
Thank you. So you want a roll call on your NGB 22? Okay.
Counselor Novoselfsky, to just confirm, you're amending Section 2.92.030A, required documents. There's A1, A2, and A3. Would it, are you looking to put the NGB 22 for all of those subsections?
No.
Just number one? Okay. So shall the city council amend the proposed ordinance regarding the veteran work off abatement program, Section 2.92.030A1, to include the NGB 22 form? Counselor Argenzio?
No.
No. Counselor Cogliandro?
No.
No. Counselor Janino?
No.
No. Counselor Grino Sawaya?
No.
No. Counselor Haas?
No.
No. Counselor Hare mio is absent. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo is absent, and Counsel President Silvestri?
No.
No. The amendment fails?
Okay.
On the original?
Yep. Now, we're on the original. Audit on the second reading. Audit on the third and final reading. Madam Clerk, roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the veteran property tax work off abatement program? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Grino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hare mio is absent. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo is absent, and Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. The ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Communications, calendar item number nine, communication from the policy writer and analyst requesting adoption of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 71, and applicable provisions relative to the use of school bus violation detection monitoring systems.
Clarence Rillo, 281 Broadway. I'm requesting adoption of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 71, and its applicable provisions in my letter. I hope I made it clear that I'm only requesting the first step out of many. That will be a conversation with the police department, the school committee, the school department, the city council, and relevant public safety officials, probably the PTO, any parents of schoolchildren or concerned residents who might have had difficulty with school bus violations. And so with the council adopting this law, it authorizes the municipality in a similar way that the veterans tax abatement law authorizes a municipality to adopt provisions and policy procedures to install camera monitoring on school buses that use a type of artificial intelligence to automatically trigger a recording when a car or a vehicle overtakes a school bus. They're already in force in New York and in Florida, and Massachusetts recently approved the use of such technology in 2025. Moore Healy signed this into law. And so the mayor is asking that we start all taking a look at this, which I think Counselor Cogliandro has already looked at in depth. And so the request is to adopt the enabling law first, and then move forward with what that would look like, when that would happen in the city of Revere.
Thank you. Any city counselors? Counselor Janino?
I think this is a good idea. I want to thank you for putting this forward. I'd like to be involved with the planning on this here. I spent many hours in my career working with the school department and school buses and school bus safety. So I appreciate if you could involve me with any planning being done with the cameras and stuff. Thank you.
I will definitely let the mayor know, and I'm sure he's going to want to talk to each and every one of you, as well as, as well as our school department officials.
Thank you. Any other city counselors? Madam Clerk, roll call?
I just have one question, Council President, to the policy writer and analyst. There's two provisions to be accepted. Is that correct?
Yes. I, yeah. I believe by adopting Chapter 40, Section 71, it incorporates provisions of Chapter 90, Section 14C. Chapter 4071 is any city or town that accepts this section. Chapter 90, Section 14C is as used in these sections, and it's the definitions and the violations. So I believe we only need to adopt Chapter 40, Section 71.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall the city council accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 71? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Grino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hare mio is absent. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo is absent, and Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. The general law has been accepted. Motion, calendar item number 10, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of installing stop-arm cameras on the city's school and transportation vehicles.
Counselor Cogliandro?
Speaks for itself.
We're all opposed?
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the mayor request the chief of police to provide additional enforcement on Tugerman Street, specifically during school drop-off and pickup times at Lincoln School.
Counselor Cogliandro, who?
For itself.
All favor, all opposed? So ordered.
May I add Counselor Haas to that last motion, please? Thank you.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the city council order to a public hearing an ordinance for the amending Appendix C salaries of the Revere revised ordinances, which provides for parity salary adjustments in concert with a recently approved Unit A and Unit B collective bargaining agreements.
Counselor Cogliandro?
It's going to go to a public hearing, but this is just to clean up some of the language that's in there to make it more clear, so that way Unit A and Unit B are similar or almost exactly the same. So, thank you.
Order to a public hearing. And that does it for tonight's meeting. We'll see you all June 2.